Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here with us on this web November evening. Uh, number twenty five. I'd like to call me in order. Is there any comments on the um, on the agenda for that?
No.
No.
A motion to approve the agenda?
Seconded.
In the discussion? That's the way you call it.
Commissioner Orla.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyer, yes. Commissioner Sucey.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Shergin.
Yes. Okay, and the approval. Let's move to the consideration from our department. Consideration of the minutes from our October twenty third. On commission meeting. Are there any amendments to the minutes? If there are no amendments, may I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion to approve.
Seconded.
For the discussion? That's the way you call it.
Commissioner Boyer, yes. Commissioner Sucey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigler.
Yes.
Commissioner Orla. I was not far from the beach, so. Oh, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yeah.
Shergin.
Yes. What's the formal end of the statement? Some of those not.
Yes, it's true.
All right, moving on to our first item. Posidial judicial hearing regarding public hearing D twenty five oh four. Steven Gerber on behalf of Noronkering applying for a variance. Steven Gerber, Gerber Architect LLC on behalf of Noronkering for a variance. Due off street parking requirement at two eighty North Hemlock Street, tax lot sixteen oh two, map font five one zero nineteen GD. The subject property is in the limited commercial C one, the zoning district. The application will be reviewed against the criteria of municipal code seventeen dot nine zero variances. Does anyone object to jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a contact credentials or personal bias? Has any commission number had any expert type contacts or made such a visit?
By business.
May we have a staff? Good evening. The applicant proposes a reduction in the number of required off street parking spaces in conjunction with planned redevelopment of a former auto repair garage in two eighty North Hemlock Street. The proposed use is a convenience store with a second floor residential unit, which is permitted use in the limited commercial C one zone. The proposed store will consist of a commercial area with approximately four thousand seventeen square feet, including coolers, a fountain break area, merchandise area, cashier station, deli counter, kitchen, bathroom, office, the star room. The second floor living area will measure approximately one thousand five hundred fifty seven square feet. The applicant previously requested an off street parking variance for a mixed use structure in April twenty twenty five. That application was denied by the planning commission as the commission found that the application did not meet criteria municipal code seventeen oh four oh seven oh variances for off street parking and loading facilities. That application did not include information on impacts or potential safety hazards to motorists and pedestrians that may occur on the city or adjacent areas. This application includes a generation study and transportation impact assessment. Moving into the applicable criteria, four seventeen, that's eighteen oh seven oh variances in off street parking and loading facilities.
Exactly.
Municipal code seventeen sixty eight requires one parking space per four hundred square feet of gross floor area for retail and offices in downtown, with an additional parking space required for a dwelling unit. Application materials indicate that the proposed conversion. Then after the proposed conversion, the structure will have a square footage of four thousand one hundred two square feet. The minimum number of off street parking spaces required by code is twelve. However, according to the site plan, a total of eight parking spaces will be provided with one of those being a sensible. During its prior review of this application, the planning commission found insufficient information exists regarding traffic impacts along North Hemlock Street. Vehicle traffic entering and exiting the parking area. The applicant has provided the traffic study, designated A four, which estimates a weekday midday peak of approximately sixty two trips per hour and a Saturday midday peak of approximately forty five per hour. Based on this information and comparison to other businesses in Cannon Beach, as well as a central market location in Rockaway Beach, the transportation assessment included that the proposed level of parking in conjunction with redevelopment, a redeveloped on street parking will be sufficient for the proposed store's needs. The assessment does not identify any significant safety hazards. The words sold would propose parking arrangement. And that includes several. Um, there been any further, uh, is there any further um? Comments, testimony, letters, anything that comes?
No.
There was an additional, I'm sorry, a question for, there was an addition of um. Addition of text in your um, staff report about formula food restaurant?
That is common. I thought that didn't stand for because it was something that was discussed last time, but then. Um, just because it was brought up. However, we are discussing a off street parking variance and not proposed use itself. So this may not, that comment may not necessarily be germane to today's discussion.
We can come back to that in a little bit of the latest news coming forward the uh. Mission prior to their.
The use, the use itself is a use by right. Um, so it is permitted use as far as a convenience store itself. Um, the redesign will go before design review. But there would not need to be a conditional use permit for the actual convenience store or the residential unit.
Specifically, the restaurant, prepared food or formula food section. Where will that go or how will that be determined?
So if an application comes in, if it is determined that this is a formula food restaurant, uh, we would handle that at that time.
So you don't really have information you need as determination now?
We don't have a complete application for the proposed redevelopment yet. Right now, we're just addressing the off street parking variance.
Sorry to keep beating a dead horse here, but would this be an administrative decision regarding whether this is formula food or not?
Under the criteria, yes. Okay, well, we can dive back into that if we want. Maybe discuss that a little deeper later. Uh, we'll move into public testimony.
So. Um, I, 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 Robert, I thought they were asking for eleven additional parking spots and you mentioned twelve.
So then the eleven, well, would be off street for with the additional residents, it would be twelve. That's how I calculated it. I probably rounded it up where they may have rounded it down. Um, they are requesting a total of eight based on the site plan.
Yeah, and I would just add that I'm not necessarily convinced that the, the authority for the apartment, uh, one unit is correct. So is that before us today? That the assessment that the apartment only needs one.
Uh, that's spelled out specifically in C one, totally gently.
I know, and I disagree with the interpretation that this particular code provision applies as opposed to another one. So is that before us?
Well, if you disagree, you can bring that up when we get into the duration.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
Okay, we'll move to public testimony. The pertinent criteria should be considered are noted in the staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets on the meeting page of the city's website. Testimony, arguments, evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria that in the comprehensive plan on municipal code, which the person testifying believes apply to a decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. Planning commission shall grant such request by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons to testify shall receive, first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yes.
You go ahead. You'll give us your full name and mailing address first.
My name is Steven Gerber. Mailing address nine three four zero Southwest Youngburg Hill Road, McMinnville, Oregon nine seven one two eight.
Go ahead, Mr. Gerber.
All right, I'm gonna. Sure, hold on a second. Share my. Can you see my screen?
No.
Hmm.
Let me.
One minute, I got it. I got it right there. How's that?
Uh, well, the screen has changed. There we go.
Is that it?
Yes, yes, very small, but um.
Well, since essentially, um, first site plan here is the existing site plan. As you're from, sure you all are very familiar. It's been this way for many years. Not a lot of, not a lot of parking provided. Um, maybe some in the back, but it was no formal parking. And there was one um, one parallel parking provided on the street. There was just one stretch of curb. The rest was, was essentially a lowered curb for access apron to the, to the uh, auto garage. Overhead doors and then the back alley area. Uh, the last, this was the last site plan we'd submitted and we were essentially trying to, to uh. Organize it where the, where the parking was between the building and the, and the street and the sidewalk. Uh, we've heard you loud and clear that it seemed to cause or create two, two issues with crossing the pedestrian, pedestrian way along Hemlock in two locations, both being a one-way, one-way uh, access lot. And so we went ahead and redesigned it and looked at it in this fashion, rotated the plan the hundred and eighty degrees, creating one, one access apron for in and out, which again minimizes the, the traffic across that, that pedestrian, which is key in this, this pedestrian oriented town. Uh, we were able to, we were able to get eight parking spaces as noted. Um, I question that we need the eleven parking spaces per the calcu, the calculation of four hundred square feet per parking space. Uh, I, I picked up in your zoning code that you, uh, anything above a point five is rounded up. Anything below is rounded down. So I was, I was counting it as ten. It was, were required for the store plus a one for, for the housing above. That can be, that can be confirmed. But that was, that was my assumption and that's how I, I labeled it as such. But in this, and, and also that um, four thousand one hundred square feet we ended up with, we were a little bigger, actually. We were like at four, four thousand three hundred and some, and that would have get, required the full eleven. But we, uh, as I went through this and prepared this, noted in your um, your land use requirements that you prefer to have planting along the sidewalk, along the sidewalks between the building and the, and the sidewalk. So we actually shrunk the store down to that four thousand one hundred square feet and integrated some, some more landscaping right here along, along that sidewalk and along the covered sidewalk that'll, that'll wrap the building. Um, in that previous site plan or the original site plan, you know, we, there was one on street parking in the, in the one we presented before, the seventy degree parking with the one-way in way, one-way out. That, that only allowed for two parallel parking on the street and this configuration, we can get three parallel parking spots on the street. So we were, we were putting in our variance in hopes that providing these eight, creating this new configuration and then these additional three, one of which we were gonna, we uh, talking with the traffic engineer. We would maybe designate as a, a ten minute only for, for any quick, anybody that's stopping to, to, for a quick jaunt into the market. Um. And that, and that was, and that was, we did, we did talk to some neighbors. The owner did talk to somebody in town that owned a lot and we were looking to, we were looking to try to, try to lease a parking spot for the residents above off-site and we were unable to attain that. And then we were also, if you, if you look at the plan, let me jump to the next one. The floor plan, I was showing the access to the, to the studio apartment or, excuse me, the, the three bedroom apartment from the, from the store level down below here. But we were also showing this, this secondary stair out the back, which would access that upper level because there's like a nine, ten foot wide by a hundred foot strip that's at that upper level that serves the adjacent property. Um, that hotel that's up there. And we were actually looking to, to try to put in a parking spot for the housing at this location and in, in our coordination with that property owner, he was a little reluctant to do that. I, he was not uh, not happy with the fact that he wasn't able to purchase this property and just was, was, was a little uh, reluctant to allow us to do that. So I'm still showing that stair there, but it, but that was the reason it was there. We were literally gonna try to put in a, put in a parallel parking space, access from that upper, upper lot. So. That is my presentation.
Any questions?
Um, are you including the three on, you're not including the three on the street in any of the calculations, right? We've got eight right there on the block and then an additional three, you're saying, uh, parallel parking on the street?
No, no. We're not, we're not including those. We're just pointing it out.
Well, thank you. I'm also really glad that you could put the parking on access, degress and degress on the opposite side of a canyon store because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic over there too. Uh, I think that makes good sense.
I had a question regarding left turns out of that lot. I know that intersection well, and I have some concerns about left turns of the lot. Has the owner given any consideration to maybe making that a forced right turn exit?
No, but I'm, that would be something that we would consider because I, I see your point. Because that is, that is the main flow from the secondary access from one-on-one. So I could see how that would, that would be beneficial.
And my one other question would be, has the owner considered the possibility of adding a couple of studio units that would be available for long-term rental to local people who work here in town, other than individuals who are employed at the store?
Uh, yes, but I, uh, per the zoning code, it was, I saw the, the section that said in a um, in a commercial use, you're allowed up to a fifteen hundred square foot residence with, that's attached or in conjunction with the commercial use. So I was just trying to meet the code and not trigger, not have to get into, I don't know, further uh, negotiation. So if that's something that, that the city would be uh, uh, open to and we, I do believe that the uh, the owner would be open to that as well. We have talked about it, but I just thought we were limited.
Understood. Thanks.
Can, can you give a dimension of each of these spots? How wide they are?
Uh, nine feet.
Nine feet?
Yes.
They're not by, in your thinking?
Thus far, you provided us with two completely different designs. As an architect, which one do you feel was better? The second or the first one that you presented?
Uh, the second one, the one I'm presenting today. The, the first one, the first one was uh, more in line with what the clients typically have provided in other locations. And they were, they were, uh, they, they, they wanted to go, go forward with that, that, that layout. I kind of had a hunch this was going to be more of a, more of an acceptable. And actually, architecturally, it's more of an acceptable design too because it, it defines your pedestrian way and it defines your road by getting that, by putting the building up against the, the lot there. Engages the, the sidewalk a little, a little better. So the second one, the one that's rotated is the one I, I like.
Thank you. You said in, I might have misheard you there. Did you say they have other markets they're in with this designer, similar design?
Well, they have nothing like, well, they have, you know, the one in Rockaway. It has, it has, it has the uh, the parking in front of the building. So there's the, there's the sidewalk, the parking lot and then the building. So you have to cross the parking lot to get from the sidewalk to the building.
What's the name of the market?
It's the center market.
In Rockaway?
Yeah, there's two. There's one that's, there's one that's what I would call a, your standard convenience store. And then there's a second one, which used to be the old grocery store and they've kept it, they've kept it, um, it's kind of a hybrid. They've kept a small stock of groceries, fresh produce. And actually, that is more in line with what this store is, is intended to be like. Where, they're also in the process of uh, setting up a, a second store in Tillamook that's again a hybrid market, not, not a convenience store. It'll have again, fresh produce and be more of a small grocery store. And that's what this, the intention of this, this location is to be.
Robert, in what way, please?
What's that?
How, how will it be hybrid?
Oh, it'll actually have pro, it'll actually have groceries, produce, uh, fruits, vegetables, uh, wine, a local wine selection. They'll just, it'll, it'll just be a little more customized to, to the Cannon Beach location.
Other questions? Are we, uh, is the traffic consultant, can you join us? So are there other people on your team, Mr. Gerber, who have been presenting that you were, you found?
I. I'm not sure if my uh, traffic engineer was able to make it or not. Can you see? Yes.
Okay, hold on. Can I have you stop screen sharing, please? One last question regarding what's your drive aisle as for the two A?
Uh, twenty-four feet.
Thank you. Twenty-four feet makes me think this is twenty-four hours. Is the proposed use twenty-four hours?
Uh, I believe, I believe, I'm not sure. I believe so. Could be.
Any other questions? I believe Jennifer Danziger may be track specialist. Okay.
Hello, Jennifer.
Hello. This is Manfred.
Hello, do you have a presentation for us tonight?
I, I don't have a presentation. I can go over the work that we did and um, just to kind of summarize what we found, we looked at two sites, um.
Excuse me for interrupting. Can we get that one out? Uh, could you give us your, your full name and mailing address, please?
Absolutely. Sorry about that. My name is Jennifer Danziger. Uh, my address is uh, one one three O Southwest Morrison Street, suite three eighteen Portland.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. Um, so we surveyed um, two locations. One was the Mariner Market in town um, where you're, you're, you're getting a sampling. It's, it's, it's not quite, I mean, it's a little bit more of a grocery store than what's planned here, um, which will be sort of a hybrid convenience grocery. But um, it was the most sort of representative of both the location and at least the the short shopping type of trips that were made. So we surveyed the Mariner Market and then the other site that we looked at was a, a, the, the true convenience store in Rockaway. Um, understanding and what that was. And in that case, again, what Stephen was saying is that store is, um, it has convenience items, it has a few beach things, but it's just, it's pretty much your standard store. It didn't have any fresh produce or those kinds of things. It did have alcohol in it. Um, we surveyed both of those for a um, a Wednesday and a Saturday and we did it from about eleven to three PM and we looked to see, you know, what was the busiest hour um, so that we could get some volumes and understand um, how many people and how many cars were going to those stores? And we um, we use that information and I'm, I'm pulling up my, my file for myself right now. We use that information to generate some uh, trip generation rates that reflect the um, the coastal convenience store represented maybe by um, the Rockaway store and then the um, the, an activity in Cannon Beach. And there's definitely a lot more pedestrian activity at the Cannon Beach store than there was at the Rockaway. There was quite a bit of, of pedestrian activity at the Rockaway store. People do park and uh, walk along the strip there. It's right next to some of the, the busier um, downtown Rockaway stores or activities that are there. Um, and we came up with some rates that, um, so as I said, mentioned, we, we calculated, um, we measured the number of cars that came in, but we also measured the total number of people in those cars and the total number of people who were walking to the store. So we had a sense of, of what the utilization was. And what we found with those was in fact that the, the utilization of the stores themselves, the person trips um, at Mariner Market um, during the busiest hour on a weekday, it was roughly forty-eight trips occurred, person trips occurred um, per thousand square feet. So we're, we're converting it to a measurement, which is just size. And then per thousand square feet. And in the um, Rockaway store, it was actually, it was, it was forty, forty person trips per thousand square feet. So that was actually a lower generator than the Mariner Market during the week. Um, and then on the weekday, weekend though, they were actually very similar. It was forty-six and forty-seven trips per thousand square feet. So they have not dissimilar um, characteristics in terms of the total number of people going to the store. However, um, the, the store in Rockaway, which again, it's on the highway, it's very, it's much more car centric. You have a lot more traffic passing by. It was about um, twice as high in terms of the number of vehicle trips in the morning or in the, in the, on the weekday and then it was about three times as high on the weekend. So people, more people are driving to that store um, in Rockaway than they are in Mariner Market. We saw more people just walking up to the store um, in Mariner Market. And um, some of that may be people parking off, you know, in the, in the other, in the larger parking lot. But my experience, at least on a weekend, and this was July, is, you know, it's pretty hard to find parking. You're not convenience parking for the Mar, Mariner Lot, uh, Mariner Market in the um, the big public parking lots. It's just hard, you know, I mean, it's hard to find a space there during the, during those peak periods. So we use that data and we um, did a slight weighting of the um, the things in favor of the the Cannon Beach and we came up with some trip rates that we felt were representative of a um, a convenience market or conven, uh, a convenience market slash small grocery store in, in a coastal community that might be representative of what was happening in Cannon Beach. And came up with the estimates that um, were presented earlier and um, which was uh, a total of sixty-two trips. So when we say a trip, we mean either in or out. So every car makes two trips, not one trip. So sixty-two trips would mean roughly thirty-one cars uh, on a weekday and uh, it was forty-five trips. So roughly, you know, someone didn't quite make it out in the average um, about twenty-two or twenty-three cars going in or out um, on the weekend during the busiest hour. Um, the other thing that we looked at, and that's just, you know, more from an uh, the standpoint of how things are going and some of that traffic is, you know, it's coming from traffic that's already driving by. So they, they come by, they stop and they kind of keep going and some of it is coming, you know, they're making a trip specifically to that store. They might be staying in town and they drove over to the store to pick something up. So those are, you know, typically what's happening with um, that type of shopping in terms of uh, about fifty percent or so coming from this, from the traffic that's already on the roadway and about fifty percent coming from, you know, with a purpose that's specific to going from an origin to the store and going back to their origin. Um, so that was one set of information. The other thing we did was we looked at the parking during those busiest times and, and actually a longer period than that. Just to see um, how heavily utilized for the parking lots there. Um, Mariner Market has uh, seven spaces in front of their store and an ADA space. And um, the Rockaway Market has, it's a little bit um, it's, it's a little bit different in, in terms of the um, parking because it has um, has about fourteen or fifteen spaces. Most of them were, were um, utilized by the patrons, but they have a few people that come in there and park and then walk off someplace else. But they have a much larger parking lot um, in terms of act. But they have a much larger parking lot in terms of activity there. But what I observed, and we also looked at, just for reference, when we were looking at the parking, we also looked at the spaces that are available for the post office that are in that shared parking lot with Mariner Market. And if we saw someone park in one of those spaces and walk into the store, that was counted as a parked space for the market. And what we found is that the, in general, both of them ended up at about six to seven park spaces. I believe on the weekday, sorry, I'm switching back and forth between screens here. On the weekday, there was one time when Mariner Market had all seven spaces were occupied and someone parked in a post office space and walked into the store. In no time did we, we actually see the ADA space was occupied at either of the stores. So it's a requirement, but it, you know, when I, when I talk about the number, that one was excluded in those. So the demand was typically seven spaces, six to seven spaces during the busiest times. And a lot of times there were empty spaces. Mariner Market also has two 10-minute spaces on the same side of Hemlock that are there right, right at the entry to the market. And I believe there's two more on the other side of the street as well, or one more on the other side of the street. So there's also some convenience parking, right, street parking right in that area that's time limited. So those were the general findings. We also did do some counts on Hemlock. Actually, it was on Third, which turns into Hemlock, just to understand the volumes. I could talk a little bit about that if you're interested in what we found in terms of volumes and speeds and such in that area. But that's the gist of the study. So with that in mind, we think that the eight spaces should be able to accommodate the demand most of the time for the, for the store. It's a little bit smaller than Mariner Market. And it's, it's, it's pretty high turnover. We suggested with the increase in on-street parking that maybe one of the spots could be a time restricted space similar to what we see in downtown. And that would potentially serve some of the businesses that are there, not necessarily specific to that site, but also to the candy store next door if someone wanted to run in. But that that might provide a little bit extra convenience parking for people coming through that area since there were, was, there will be an increase in on-street parking with the changes in frontage with this project. The other thing we suggested was that the parking is time limited. At Mariner Market, it is, it is time limited. At the Rockaway site, it's not. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why we saw people using that parking and walking off-site and doing other things. So are there any questions for me?
I have one. How do you anticipate if the parking lot is full, that somebody is going to pull in and see that it's full and then turn around and be able to leave? Are they going to have to just back right out or?
I mean, I think they can see the parking lot as they're approaching on the highway. So if, I mean, I think they can see if the spaces are full or not. So my hope would be that they don't, that they, they see the parking lots full and they don't pull in. They just keep going. And that's where, again, that, that space may be. I will note, I mentioned that we did collect some information on Hemlock itself that I would mention that the speeds on the roadway, sorry, I'm looking to see. The average speed on, is on Third, so before the corner, but the average speed in the center of Third, that was the place we could put it where we weren't, we can get a tube down that's not being affected by people parking on it and such. The average speed was about nine miles per hour. And then the 90th, the 85th percentile speed was about 13, 14 miles per hour. So people are not traveling quickly through that corridor. While it would not be ideal that anyone was backing out, I don't think it will happen very frequently. And, you know, it, it, that is one of the disadvantages of having the, you know, the single entrance that the other two entrance setup did have. But I, you know, I think in, in general, it's probably better to have the one point of crossing rather than two points of crossing on the sidewalk. It provides some more on-street parking. So I think that's a low-risk occurrence. It could occasionally happen, but I think it would be relatively low risk or fairly infrequent.
It looked like there was one time there about one o'clock and somebody was doing 70 miles an hour or 65 or 70. That's pretty impressive.
I suspect that that was, you know, something, something got misread. It gauges it based on axle spacing. And so something must have, every now and then you get something that's just, doesn't make any sense. You know, picks up a vehicle the wrong way. It could have been someone, you know, someone in a parking space backing up as someone was driving over. I can't, I can't explain quite how you got that. I don't think, I would be, it would be pretty impressive for someone to get up that fast in there. That's kind of a throw-out piece of information.
Yeah, it looked like there were a couple of those throw-outs.
Yeah.
The other comment I had was, how long do you anticipate that each visitor to the business is going to stay in that store? Do you have an idea for that?
I'll let Stephen answer for the applicant. And I can, I can give some sense of what I thought it was. I'll go first, though. And that's just, you know, my observation was that, you know, stays were, there were a lot of people that were there less than 10 minutes. There are some people that were there 20 minutes. But I would say it was maybe 10% that were longer than 20 minutes at the, at either location. So even though the spaces are time limited in, in a Mariner Market, and I don't remember now if it's 20 or 30 minutes. They, the time that people spend there is pretty short. So there's a lot of turnover that occurs at those sites. And I mean, a lot of the, a lot of people are there less than 10 minutes. Meaning, I sort of, when I was making my parking observations, I was observing cars, you know, within that, within sort of 10-minute windows. And when we were doing our counts within 10-minute windows, and a lot of the, a lot of the turnover was less than 10 minutes. People run in, grab something and come back out again. Again, occasionally we saw some longer things. I think at Mariner, I only saw one that really went very long, but most of it was pretty quick turnover. And then Stephen might talk also about what he's seen or what the clients talked about regarding.
I just, we've got, didn't you say 31, 32 people coming in per hour? And you've got to do the math, I mean, you've got to turn over four times in the hour for 32 people.
Yep, it'll be, yeah, so I, I think, if you look at, you say, I think most of it will turn over pretty quickly. And that, that, I mean, that's what we were seeing. Those are based on the counts that we saw at those stores. And again, at Mariner Market, they have a similar amount of parking. And so they were a little bit lower in terms of parking, total traffic demand. But I, I, I think, I think it will be, I think it will be busy. But my guess is that this is even possibly a little bit conservative in terms of the trip generation that it, that there, it might be higher walking and closer to Mariner Market just based on the ease of travel, how busy it can be in downtown, you know, in that downtown area in Cannon Beach. I think people will be more inclined, it's a real walking community. So I, it might even be less. But yeah, it's, if, if those numbers come that weekday, that midday weekday time period, which I think catches some lunches and things like that, too, would be a pretty rapid turnover of vehicles.
And how many spots does the Mariner have, by memory?
I think it's seven spots and an ADA spot. And then there's three more spots for the post office with an ADA spot.
Yes, but those are for the post office.
Yes. I only saw one used once where I saw someone walk, park in the post office space and walk across to Mariner Market. Most of the time there was space available. So it was only one time when there were no spaces available in front of the market that I saw someone park in the post office and walk over.
Okay. So you don't think those additional spots of the post office are utilized for the Mariner Market? I mean, seven, you say six plus an ADA or seven plus an ADA?
I think it was seven plus an ADA. I have to go back and look at the number. I do have it in here in my report. And I just, it's just been long enough since I wrote it that I don't recall the number of. I'm pretty sure it's seven plus an ADA. And then the,
And then the utilization, post office spots occasionally. And then the restricted, at least two on that side of the street that are restricted to 10 minutes.
Right, and I didn't, I didn't see those used a lot. It was a bit harder for me to see. So Mariner has eight spaces, including one space, ADA space that have a 30-minute time limit. And then the post office is three spaces, including an ADA space, and those are 15-minute time limits. But again, I only saw the post office space used once where we saw someone park in the space and then walk into the market across the, across the lot. So.
I guess my concern with the compensation is just whether the parking lot is full and somebody's got to turn around or somebody pulls up and not be able to, you know, squeeze by and get into the same spot.
Yeah.
But it makes it a little cramped versus the drive-through one that was the original submission. You know, they're giving pay, so it looks like for both of them.
Yeah, I would say that's, that's true. It's, it's, there are advantages in some ways and, you know, trade-offs that occur. The only one I really see is a disadvantage is, is, you know, the not, you do have to turn around on-site. You can't just sort of park and then continue through or pass through if, if in fact it doesn't work or you drop someone off. And so.
It sounds like, it sounds like you talked to one of the neighbors about renting space. Did you talk to the city or any of the other neighbors?
You're muted, Stephen.
Excuse me, no, that was actually one of the questions I was going to ask of the commission. If you did have, have names of other, of other lots and people that were, that would, could and would provide something like that. Because the client is, is willing to lease something, lease some parking spots long-term.
Well, I believe the city has a parking lot. I don't know, Jeff or Robert, if you could talk about that. But I mean, wouldn't that, if you're able to lease spaces, wouldn't that, wouldn't you then withdraw this application for the variance? Wouldn't that be something you guys looked into before you spent all this time and money asking for a variance?
I hadn't, no one, no one posed, posed that as an option. We just, in our discussions early on, it was, we're not able to accommodate them on-site. And, and this is, this is where we ended up. And the only reason we're looking at renting other, other space that we've introduced, the housing above. So. What's that?
Yeah, I don't know, leasing spaces from that city lot is an available option this time. I don't have enough information to answer that question. Look, I'm saying, maybe you're taking one spot and then not adding one to another. So that is zero sum game. But we can make that a condition, I suppose, approval if we go down there. Some place, be able to have as a spot for the residents.
I did have a question on the parking study. You had mentioned that you could differentiate between trips that were made specifically to the store versus those that were just passing through. I'm wondering how you would make that determination. For instance, looking at Mariners Market, watching the traffic patterns, I don't know how you would know which ones are intentional versus.
That's, that, we, that's based on some surveys that were done. It's a, it's, it's a resource. So I should back up a step and say, you know, we looked at our, our standard book of trip generation for a convenience store and the rates in that standard book, it's called the Trip Generation Manual. The standard rates for a convenience store would have been like 60% of the traffic driving by would have had to, you know, it would have been, it was, it was really unreasonably high for the location. And that's why we went and did this, the surveys. But what we did, that, one of the other pieces of information that's also available is what we call a pass-by rate, what percentage of traffic for different types of uses is already on the roadway. For a convenience use like this, it was, I believe it was actually 51%. And just for perspective, like a fast food restaurant, it's like 50, roughly 50 to 55% of fast food restaurants. So those are, that data was, came from an external source. We did not get that specifically from these surveys, but from an external source that said, for these types of uses, this is the typical percentage of visitors that are, or patrons that are coming from the adjacent roadway. So they're not adding traffic, but rather they're just, they're, 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 they're passing by and they opt to use that, that, that service or that, basically that service if they, if they, if it's available.
Thanks for explaining that. I think I had one other thought, but I'd be interested to hear your feedback. Mariners Market is very different in terms of its contribution to Hemlock, which is an extremely busy street, as you noticed, because the traffic leaves Hemlock to go to Mariners, but then exits. This is going to be a much more complicated traffic flow and will add a different level of traffic to Hemlock than Mariners.
Agreed, you know, I mean, it's, it's true. And we did not track when they left Mariner, if they turned back toward Hemlock or if they went over to, to Spruce. And I don't remember, but yeah, you're right. They do, it is, it's not going in and out the same, the same location. And so.
It's a one-way entrance, so they can only leave Hemlock.
Right, right, right. And, yeah, but I'm, I, I'm trying to look and see exactly where they come out. It is a one-way entrance and then they come out and they circle around and they can go to either.
They go behind the post office to the left there and then out east.
Right, and then, yeah, when they come out, then, but they do circle around when they come back out onto.
You can go left or right on.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so it does, it does, you're right, it does contribute less to Hemlock in terms of it's only the trips in versus this would be trips in and out. Agreed.
Thanks.
Questions? Thank you very much. Are there any other presenters on behalf of the applicant? We'll move then to presentations by proponents of this application. Okay, how about presentations by opponents? Nothing? No, okay. As the applicant, you have the opportunity to put in any final statements before we close the record to further testimony.
We don't have anything to add?
Okay, any final questions from the commission? Okay, then we'll close the record and move to our deliberation. Who would like to start?
You know, I'd like, I'd like to know, just to start out that by my campaign, Thirteen parking spots. Um, they looked at that residential piece the wrong way. The, that will not be a single-family residence. It will be group housing and they need a parking spot for each member. Of um, each person who lives up there.
I got, uh, the other concern that I had was that. In and out of that lot and I'm not sure people will be able to identify whether or not there's a spot available or not, especially if they're coming from south and now be able to see. You know, whether the spot to take and there's been some congestion there. Two-way traffic uh, on that twenty-four foot even and um. The other thing that uh, one of the other commissioners brought up is the left turn on Hemlock. Uh, across the southbound lane of traffic, I think from Third Street. The visibility and the speed may not uh, be conducive to left-hand turns there. Uh, those are a couple of my concerns. The congestion and the left-hand turn as well as. Well, echo what Mike said, that is. Uh, the number of spots for the residents, if they have two or three. Um, employees, they'll fill up there, uh, most likely they'll have vehicles.
Yes, but in regards to parking for the resident, it says clearly. There are many sections for residents that have one dwelling and two parts for residents that are providing conjunction with commercial use. Where, where those residents constitute one or more victims of the area. So even though it has three documents, one dwelling.
Where is that, you?
That's in Article Charles, Article um, in seventeen sixty-eight, zero two zero.
Okay.
Um, residents, section A.
Residents is?
Businesses, section A.
Uh. Does it take up less than fifty percent?
It does, yeah.
Okay. So I think this calculation will, that would love it.
Actually, that's, that is not correct though. Look, read it. Single-family dwelling and you have to, you have to go look at the definition. Two-family dwellings and multiple-family dwellings. That's, that's what they're. It has to be one of those three for this section to apply. Um, and you know, with the proposing is not that. I don't think he's saying it's multi-family in any way.
No, it's, yeah.
It explains one, one's, it's a single-family dwell, but pretty bad.
No, it's group housing.
Look, look down farther, one per, per sleeping room. I still consider doing that on my side. Yeah, so, so the way I read that, that provision A is if you have a single-family dwelling as part of. Uh, a, offered in conjunction with a business. Um, or a two-family dwelling or a multifamily dwelling, then you only have to have one part or dwelling unit. But, but, but as you look at the definitions, this is neither single-family, two-family or multifamily housing. This is group house. Which requires one, one parking spot per sleeping room. So, you know, it doesn't change anything except that they're asking for. Five units. They're gonna give us two back, they're gonna take one away on the street. Give us perhaps three back. For their business to take one general parking spot and the proposal perhaps is to make one of those a ten-minute parking, which means they really. Um, only give us. Um, they, they take four street parking spots. Or five. And they're um, and they're, and they're taking, and they're using one parking spot that's available for the general public to do that right now. So it's an at-boss. Now, I would mind if, if there were um, multiple units up there that could have housed, you know, other people, but right now. Um, you know, there's really no justification for it. In fact, I know when you look at that street during peak period, you know, and you're taking only five parking spots on the street, that's gonna be a problem. I think their parking codes are a check um. Or volumes of the size of those that we have on lines one. Several checks. If we, in a per four hundred, we get eight spots, we should need per four hundred, rather than trying to receive that based on usage. Okay, um. By code, they have been requiring year eleven or registered in four thirteen. That would require a larger parking area. So this, our parking code serves as a check to the volume, size of the building that it is serving.
Hmm.
So the restriction of that parking area. May require them to have a smaller building.
Yeah, that's an option to have for us.
Rather than trying to ask for a um, a variance that. Could wind up being problematic in more clarity.
You know, it, it, it doesn't serve me so much, but it, it occurs to me that as we go through this that. You know, parking is a problem the city needs to address. Downtown parking has become a business. It's terrible. People don't even go down, in fact, my wife don't drive it because she thinks she's gonna kill somebody. The, the way people pop in and out of cars, but um. You know, it may be that, that, you know, this council would wanna approve something like this. But it should be considered in the context of the parking problems we have and the proposals that we have in them, that we would consider to fix the overall mess. So this seems premature, both in terms of the state of their development, their property, um. Their uh, planning. And, you know, the, the issues before the council.
I tend to agree with you. I think my, my other point of view though is that we've talked before as well about. The fact that these parking requirements mean that we end up with a bunch of paved space in downtown. And that's a, that's another tension to consider that we said they have to provide. Lots of parking. Pretty soon what we see is mostly blacktop. And that's also um, a question mark for me. I'm not saying I think this is a right application, but I do worry about that other component.
I do too.
Well, I did too. They've looked at this twice and as I said in our first one, came up to us in paper. I don't see how they don't get more than eight spots and it's, which way to configure.
Yeah.
So, you know, then, then that falls on us to pay. No. And does the parking well do work?
I'm very concerned about the amount of congestion that this will add to Hemlock. But that would be true whether there's eight spots that are thirteen.
And, and the, you know, and that's what happened beginning of the year is the single in out better than the one way.
Which, well, that's kind of a sample of this.
It's correct, but it involves the street for, you know, the end. Uh, and I run into this right next door and uh. Where I pull in and I can't find why they had to do that guy. But isn't there a maintenance fee though? There's an off-street parking maintenance fee that, again, it's another indication that they could take advantage of that. Um, yeah, yeah, uh, section five. If you can't provide the required parking. You pay a maintenance fee to the city, such as by the curve. Um, for that privilege. Now, you know, other people are paying that. You know, I don't know what. Mariner, for example, does, but I haven't known businesses up and down Hemlock that are paying to enter it. So, you know, that is an option in addition to shrinking the size of the store and a bunch of other things that um, really don't. Compel me to really want to accept a variance at this point.
Well. The twenty-four foot even that they have two-way traffic, is that really less of uh, of. Congestion or really more pedestrian-friendly? Because uh, if you have people backing out, that's not pedestrian-friendly. Plus if you have, whether it's twenty-four feet here or twelve and twelve. Then you're still gonna take up the same amount of space. On the sidewalk. Are you either drive straight through, see there's no parking, continue through forward. And there's, you know, you can only make a right-hand turn into there or maybe you can make a left, but. At least that puts the exit, if they put the exit on the south side, uh, farther away from Third Street. Where uh, they had a turn left potential, at least it's fifty feet or wherever. The distances are, are way uh, are more than that actually.
I think it would, I would turn with the mess of that.
Yeah, it could be, but my point is, uh, whether you have twelve and twelve or you have twenty-four, it still takes up the same amount of pedestrian space on the sidewalk and.
Although as a pedestrian, having to check twice and with their children, I can guarantee you.
Totally agree.
Two crossings is very different than one. And very, very, and they're getting away from.
Same shirt to.
For them. It's gonna be a disaster to have two crossings that people are checking.
Last, are any guys have anything you want to add in here?
Yeah, um. My, my gut feeling to begin with was, was some confusion on. Whether we were to address the residents or how to a- address that. I thought there were several places where. Um, it wasn't clear to me whether the variance was for both the residents and the, the business or. Um, you know, how we needed to address that. Uh, Mike's comments about maybe it's group housing and that has yet again additional requirements. Um. I don't have any comment on that, but um. I would really like. To have the proposal detailed enough to know exactly what they intended to do with the upstairs residence as well as. What they were providing for the, for the business itself. Um. And I didn't see enough detail in what I looked at either. The first time they came by or this time to really be able to tell what, what their intentions were on the, on the residence. I share your concern on the congestion though in that parking lot. We've got a number of those one-way in and one-way and that's the only way back out. Parking lots in this town. Um, it's one over by the Chocolate Cafe. There's uh, there, there are a couple of those. And they get terribly congested. Um, to the point that I, they're usually not even utilized. A lot of times those parking spots are open. Um, but anyway, I, I just don't know that. There's not more concerns than clarity for me right now.
Any further, anyone else wanna put any further comments out?
I'm with Mike. I, I think he hit the nail on the head with, with the idea that. That each room should have a parking space and if, if that's how, I mean, that's how I'm interpreting the code, so. I, I don't see any way that. Uh, uh, unless there was something to convince me that, that that interpretation is wrong. Um, I don't see any way to vote for this. And, and if we do, just know that I'll. Be applying for a variance for my building downtown uh, next month.
Well, it seemed like an overriding concern. It's just our parking downtown. Um, we've heard that pretty damn much way. I think because we have. Some concern about interpretation of the code, swear that probably doesn't make sense to go down that path, more the path of the concern about parking downtown. Unless we just wanna hammer out. Correction on, on the code, that's probably not one thing that.
You know, I don't know how you resolve it. That's the point, I, you know.
Yeah. It is an interpretation, so um. My thought is, um, we've heard a couple of people now say, a couple of commissioners now say, um, concerned about moving ahead of this. My concern would be any specifics around. The residential housing, putting that as a condition, it seems like. It would make it vulnerable.
Well, the problem with that residential housing right now is that it would just add parking spots, it required parking spots, you know. Um, you, you might say, well, for these additional houses, and that's the way with um. It, for the additional houses, for the additional spots for the um. Other folks that work in the city, yeah, you can have a variance for that, but not anything else. Um, that's probably how, how, you know, you would approach that issue if you get more housing. Um. You know, there is that, that housing proposal in front of the commission, uh, the, um. Council and, and it tries to address that, not necessarily for Hemlock, but for other streets. But it, that we, but I think that the people that wrote that went in that direction because. The parking issues in the city are so big that. As Aaron says, if you grant one variance, all of a sudden, you're gonna be granting a lot more. And, you know, you lose control of the situation. The reality, we need to hit it from a perspective, a high level, the city. And say, this is how we're gonna resolve our parking issues and then we can start structuring solutions for individual business.
So Mike, if we were. Or telegraphing kind of, here's a concern. Hmm? Tell me if I summarized this right. You would feel better about this if you felt like the housing was not a, a house on top of a, a, a commercial business. The house, the house was housing and it served another purpose and that would allow you to feel better about.
I could feel better about it, but I, but again, without a plan of Toronto, it's, it's hard to say, but if they were just to add. Of their four thousand square feet, they have fifteen hundred square feet for um. The apartment, the reality is they can go up to thirty-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine square feet and add a lot of um, workforce housing up there.
So you would feel better about this?
Yeah, but then, but then I think it would force us all to deal with an issue that their parking requirements get a lot bigger all of a sudden. And again.
It's two more spaces.
Yeah, it's, it's just um. Without, without a fair policy in parking as a city that addresses the issues we have now, granting variants is just opening a Pandora's box for call.
I would be interested if there are any issues of the option to pay for parking like other businesses do.
Yeah.
But I feel like that option hasn't been explored.
Yeah.
And that would make me feel better about granting variance if that effort is made, especially with regard to residential spaces where we know that it wouldn't be a required space and it could be at a distance.
Yeah.
Customers, they're gonna need to be a little closer, but a residential space could be walking distance from the building.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing you're not concerned about this request. I think we're probably in a spot where someone could put a motion out. I don't know.
I move that we. Um, reject application for variance um, based upon um. The parking provision they provided seventeen, what is it?
Seventeen ninety?
Ninety, um. That requires uh. Thirteen spots as opposed to eight.
That's not, I'm sorry, that is not the records for parking, obviously.
Seventeen sixty-eight.
Seventeen sixty-eight.
Zero two zero.
Zero two zero. And uh, um, uh, a concern that granting this um, particular variance would. Um. Create bigger problems uh, with our downtown congestion. And I think um, there's the section of, actually, I'm thinking through this. Wait, give me a minute. There's another section in here. What is the uh, oh yeah. What is the variance provision?
What section is variance?
Yeah.
Is that a stupid name?
Sorry, I'm sorry folks. My apologies. So let's say. I, I would reject the application based upon the fact that their parking requirements thirteen exceed the eight. That they are able to offer and that um, the variance request for this parking should be denied. Based on uh, section seventeen ninety oh seven oh A one. Uh, that neither present or anticipated future trap of, traffic volumes generated by the use of the site. Or use of sites in vicinity reasonably require strict or literal interpretation enforcement with the requirements. So that's, I, uh, I move to reject based upon seventeen ninety oh seven oh A one. So that's, I, uh, I move to reject based upon seventeen ninety oh seven oh A one.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? That's what we call a vote.
Commissioner from Claire.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yeah.
Commissioner Law.
Yes.
Commissioner Sisay.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore. Yes. Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, variance request is denied. Stick to a minute break.
Chair, Chair Newton, if you can hear me, you're muted.
Okay, so we'll do that again.
Sorry.
Public hearing, B twenty-five oh five, Jamie Oz, warning applying for variance, B twenty-five oh five, any possible for variance to off-street parking requirements at three-five-two-four West Shunah. Tax lot fourteen hundred, map five-one-zero thirty-two C C. For a proposed ADU. The subject property is in a residential moderate density or long zone. The application will be reviewed with the courtesy of the municipal code seventeen dot nine zero variances. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias? Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts or need a site for this? Sorry. Maybe have a staffer quickly.
Hey, yes, the applicant requests off-street parking variance in order to accommodate a proposed accessory dwelling unit. Subject property does not have sufficient space to accommodate the required off-street parking required by the ADU. Moving into applicable criteria seventeen ninety oh seven oh variances for off-street parking and loading facilities. The standard comment is municipal code seventeen seventy-two oh eight oh, accessory dwelling requires one additional off-street parking space in addition to the two required for a single tenant dwelling. As presently configured, property does not have space for an additional parking area. The driveway in front of the house is less than fifteen feet deep and cannot be counted as two parking spaces in addition to the garage. Due to the limited depth of the driveway, the residence of the house is a grassy, covered area to become a right-of-way or additional parking. Due to the width of the house in relation to the front of the property line, it is not possible to extend the driveway on either side of the residence. And that concludes the standard report.
I see, uh, email here from Mike Morgan, is there anything else?
Uh, no, the email Mr. Morgan is the most recent of all.
Okay, we'll move to public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports listed on criteria sheets on the meeting page of the city's website. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in comprehensive planning or municipal code, which the person testifying believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidence review hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments or evidence regarding the application. Planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional lit, testimony, arguments or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom the words represent. Is there a presentation by the advocate?
Is that me?
Uh, it may well be, yes. Uh, can you give us your name and, um, mail address?
Yeah, sorry, I'm Jamie Osborne, I'm the owner of the property. Um, uh, mailing address currently is six eight four Kolu Drive in Kailua, Hawaii. I six seven three four.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys.
Uh, no worries, um, but, uh, go ahead if you're ready.
Um, I'm just here for questions. I know we sent out, sent in our application. My, um, friend and contractor has been helping me with that. He's, um, still lives in the area. We are away on military orders right now. Um, and we're just trying to, um, build an ADU in, um, with our backyard space um, on our property there. Obviously, that's hard to do while we're away, so I've got a lot of help on the ground there. But I'm trying to be present for the meeting in case you guys have any questions. Um, no one there was able to be present tonight for us, so, um, I don't, I did, I'm here to answer questions. I'm not sure what you guys have for me.
Sure, other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just one, um, Jamie, um, thank you for your service and all that stuff. Um, can you tell me, uh, have you talked to your neighbors about it?
Yeah, we actually, uh, I wrote a letter which my, so we have some good friends, um, of ours and longtime members of the community as well, um, living in our house, renting our house from us right now. Um, and I had sent Bridget over, um, a letter to distribute to neighbors in the, um, neighborhood and she did that just this past week. And I know we got, um, a letter of support from one of our neighbors Josiah, who he emailed that to you, or he emailed out to us and to you guys, I believe, and I emailed it to Tessa yesterday. Um, and then I know we had a lot of verbal support, like Mike Morgan being one of them. I'm not sure if he ended up writing a letter or not, but, um, and then Brit, support from our tenant and friend Bridget as well. Um, and I'm not sure if anyone else wa- was able to, um, get a letter into you guys. But, um, yes, we have, we have talked to the neighbors. Everyone, um, is aware of what we are planning to do. Um, yeah.
No, the actions remaining, uh, I think, you didn't hear any objection, objections?
No, not that I'm aware of, no. And I, and I gave them my, like, direct contact information to, um, in case they did have any concerns or questions, and I haven't heard anything from anyone as of yet.
Other question?
Um, there's a little bit of a line of sight issue where you pull in going south of, uh, West Shunah. Uh, I imagine that the ADU tenant would park on the street, is that correct?
So we are, so we actually do have, um, what I think is plenty of, like, of, um, parking to designate a spot for a tenant in our ADU. Um, we do have a two-car garage. We also have, um, space for two cars side by side in our driveway. Um, it's just the matter of, it would, like, because of the, um, the measurements uh, that are required per parking spot. And it was like a depth thing for the driveway, not so much a width thing. So we actually are able to park, if necessary, two cars in our garage and two cars side by side in our driveway. And then I know it's not, um, we can't technically use it because it's, um, an ease, a city easement, but we also have that space that's a city easement. I thought that was worth noting, you know, we've, like, had access to that space for, for years. Um, you know, my, like, we've parked our boat there for years. My dad had a boat parked there for a long time, you know, and, and vehicles as well. And that's always been, um, a space that we have had access to. Whether we can technically designate it, you know, per the code to this ADU space or not. Um, I guess my point is, we, like, I feel like we have plenty of parking, you know. As, as long as we have tenants or, like, as long as, you know, when we go back, if we're living in the main house or, you know, our, our friends who are living there renting it from us right now, they've got two vehicles, like, and, you know, I feel like any family living in that main house is likely not going to have more than two vehicles at a time, whether it's us or someone else. And so there's plenty of space to have one more vehicle parked on our property. Um, for the ADU tenant, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
I've, uh, I've just been looking at a photograph there that the street looks like it's playing wide enough to pull off on the street. That was my concern is if they are going to be pulling off the street with that limited size, uh, line of sight coming up there, they're often off.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it, it's wide enough that, that you can park completely on that, um, on that space and you're not on the, on the road at all, not on the street at all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. I, I'm assuming you're the only one here on behalf of, of the applicant.
Yeah, correct.
All right, we'll come back to you before we wrap up. Are there presentations, uh, are there presentations by proponents of this variance request?
Yeah, Mike Morgan.
Morgan, please go ahead. You're muted if, uh, if you're speaking, I can't see your picture. Mike, we, we still can't hear you if you're speaking now. And there's your. No?
You're, you're muted, Mike.
Question on what, what, Mike? I mean, do you think we're ready for motion?
No. Mike, go on, uh, we do have your letter here. Um, we're going to continue on and if, if, um, chime in anytime and we'll come, we're going to go a little out of order just to, uh, keep things moving along. Uh, still can't hear you if you're speaking. All right, uh, anyone else, um, who is in favor of this variance request? Okay, uh, are there opponents? Anyone against the variance request? Okay, Jamie, as the applicant, you have an opportunity to say, uh, offer any final thoughts. Um, if anyone has questions, now is the time, we will move to closing the record here shortly, and at that point we can take no more comment.
Yeah, um, I mean, like I said in, you know, our application and our letter, we're just like, as, you know, Osborne family, longtime business owners in Cannon Beach, I know we don't have our business there, um, anymore. But we, you know, we're always well aware of, like, the, you know, the staffing trouble, the housing struggle. Um, and it's worse now than ever. And now that I, um, you know, have that property since my dad passed away. Um, that's just like one of the things that we'd always talked about was like, you know, how, like, it's, housing was always a struggle. We never had, like, the financial means at the time to, like, do anything about that. Um, now I'm kind of just finding myself in a situation where I feel like I, um, could help with that. Um, you know, and we've, you know, we've talked to some of our neighbors who do own businesses, you know, like the, um, Arnie and Malia, like Kukui, they have an ADU in their house that they use, um, to help with staff housing. Um, and one of the things that we always talked about, my dad and I was like, how could we, you know, like, house someone ourselves? And I was like, well, we could always, you know, build an ADU. And this was kind of like around the time where, um, you know, ADUs were still kind of like gaining popularity and like, it wasn't, you know, as popular as coming of a thing. And I think at first my dad was like, you know, but like, built on, on our property, like, really? And I was like, yeah, I think it's like, a lot of people are doing it now and it's a way, and he, so he was always open to the idea and it's something we talked about, never really, um, you know, made any moves towards it. But the reality is we have the space, so we have that, um, huge, huge yard double lot. Like, you know, we already have the, like, walk path access down the side of the house. Um, and so I think that it would just be like a great way to, you know, help with that housing shortage, help the community any way we can, you know, help us, like, hold on to that house as long as we can. Um, we're hoping to get back there as soon as my husband is done with this assignment here in Hawaii. Um, and, you know, whether it's like a tenant in the ADU or maybe like at some point we would move back and, you know, we would stay in the ADU for a while and rent out the main house. Um, kind of just like, you know, that, that's like my childhood home. It's the home that I, the only home I grew up in and I, and I'm just really trying everything I can to hold on to it. Um, and, you know, as, as you know, for like our generation, um, it's a struggle, like owning homes, um, it's a lot harder these days. So, um, yeah, that's all, that's all I got really, just trying to get creative and, um, find ways that can help us out and it's a win-win for everyone in my opinion. Um, yeah, that's all, that's it. Thanks, thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. Any final question before we close the record? Uh, Mike going once, twice, I knew that if you can unmute, we'll give you a final opportunity, a little out of order here. We do have your letter, uh, in front of us, it was sent to us, we've all read it. Thank you for that. Okay, I'm assuming there's some technical difficulty there for Mike, Mike, um, so we'll go ahead and close the record. But again, do have you, you're testing. Um, good luck to begin. I did say to close the record, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're officially closed, it's many to our consideration, good luck to staff.
I, I don't know if I missed the, the, the staff report, but was there any objection from Public Works? I mean, we're not in any utility right of way or any other potential snafu with Public Works, I assume.
Nothing was identified, no.
Good.
Uh, I move to approve the applicant for Jamie Oz, form twenty-five dash zero five for variance for off-street parking requirements of thirty-five thirty-four, Washington, for ADU. Is there a second? Further discussion? That's what we call a vote.
Commissioner Stuckey, sir.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Bates.
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair.
Yeah.
Commissioner Law.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. The variance, variance request twenty-five oh five is hereby reached. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your, okay.
Maybe we have the three reports.
Yes, in the month of October, until the fourteenth were removed, there was not a replanting requirement. If I remember correctly, these locations, they were all large lots and there was no need for a replanting requirement on these offices.
You mean they had four streets down the hall?
Correct.
Questions? Good of the order, you don't have anything but good of the order?
I'd just like to say welcome back, Chad. We're looking forward to seeing you in person.
Thank you, thank you. I look forward to it myself and, uh, and I want to just thank Robert for what a great job he's doing through the transition and, and, uh, and Carrie for being on the call. Good to see you, Carrie.
We, we second, and I think we've even thirded, uh, Robert, appreciation.
Thank you, Robert.
Uh, and Jeff, we're excited to have you back.
It's, it's like the whole same crew, you know?
Come on down.
Yeah.
Good weather for you.
You notice we all have our spoilers on, yeah.
Yeah.
It's raining down here all the time.
Yeah, this is, this is awful late for me, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, yeah, it is. So with no continuation, our request for continuation tonight, uh, we have no meeting, am I understanding that's correct?
Correct, we'll have a meeting in December, we have not received any applications for that.
Mike, would you, your.
My last day is the thirty-first, uh, well, whatever the meeting is, whatever that is.
Okay, all right. So, um, the thank yous and all that, and anything else for the good of the order? The mayor's here, thank you very much.
Good day.